Board of Selecting Meeting for May thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you all would just stay standing for one moment. There's an announcement. We lost a colleague here at Town Hall several weeks back, and I'd just like to acknowledge her and show respect to the family in the moment of silence for Barbara Harris. Thank you. Our clerk's not here, and Tracy's not here. Sean, can I ask you to take the minutes on your scorecard? You okay with that?
Consider it done, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
A couple announcements. The Spring Annual Town Meeting is tomorrow night, May fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at seven PM at the Uxbridge High School on Quaker Highway. All are encouraged to attend. You can get the warrants online or their copies here at Town Hall in advance. Also a reminder, the annual election is Tuesday, May twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Polls open at seven AM to eight PM, and that is located at the McCloskey Middle School, which is the old high school. This weekend marks the sixty-ninth anniversary of the World War II B-24 bomber crash site on Chamberlain Road. The ceremony will be held this Sunday at May nineteenth at twelve o'clock noon. Related to that, the Board would like to acknowledge and thank Ryan Ahern. Ryan completed his Eagle Scout project, which included improvements to that crash site on Chamberlain Road. He, uh, his work was a general cleanup. He had built a, and constructed a nice bench within the area, did a great deal of mulching, and really beautified the site. So, those that can, please make it out, and if you see Ryan, acknowledge him for the great work he's done. And then just an update on the schedule for May. As you know, this is kind of a transitional month for the Board and for Town, Board of Selectment meetings. So, on the fourteenth tomorrow, we have the Town Meeting. Then on the twenty-first, we have the elections. The day after the elections, the BOS will be sworn in, the new BOS will be sworn in, and a reorganization of the Board will occur at six PM on the twenty-second. And then on the twenty-eighth will be the next regular scheduled BOS meeting at six o'clock. With that said, let me go out to Citizens Forum. Anyone here for Citizens Forum? All right.
Let me just make an announcement on the announcement.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Peter, aye.
Uh, there are a number of positions on the ballot for which there are no candidates. And let me read them. There's an opening in the Finance Committee for a one-year term. On the Library Trustees, there are two openings for three-year terms. Library Trustees, there's one opening for a one-year term. Trustees of Soldiers Memorial must be a veteran. There's a three-year open term. Trustee of Soldiers Memorial for a non-veteran, it's a three-year term, there are no candidates. And Uxbridge Housing Authority, it's a five-year term. Some would call it a sentence, but there are no candidates. So, if you know anyone who would like to, um, do a stint in office, in order to be a write-in candidate, a successful writing candidate, you have to have the same number of signatures as you would require nomination papers to be on the ballot. And I believe that number is fifty.
Fifty votes?
Yes.
Fifty writings?
Fifty writings. That's a vote, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's all. Thank you.
But I believe you get your name published in the annual book regardless of how many votes you get. You don't even need to meet the threshold, so for publicity.
I have a quick announcement, if I may.
Well, I just noticed that Donald Duck and Mickey Mouse quite often.
Can I make a quick announcement? Just, and I just wanted to personally sort of acknowledge, uh, the moving on of the Chair, Mr. Cahill, and Mr. Desalitz, and, uh, so whatever. We appreciate your service. Uh, on a personal note, two of you are on the, were members of the Board that hired me, so, so I appreciate your, whether you voted for me or against me, whatever. We've worked together for the last couple of years, so I appreciate your confidence and all your assist, all your, you know, help, help and guidance and stuff in the first couple of years. And, you know, if you get bored next year, come on back, so.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any more awkward television? If the Board doesn't mind, I'd like to suggest that we jump to the public hearing. And I'll open the public hearing for the application of storage of flammable and combustible liquids, flammable solids, and/or flammable gases. Evergreen Development, five eighty-six Quaker Highway. Folks from Evergreen are here.
Make sure everybody signs in, okay?
Sean, you'll keep a copy for the notes.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. On behalf of Evergreen Development and Mr. Bevelacqua, we're here. We'll keep it brief, brief presentation. As the construction for the Batumina's Concrete Manufacturing Facility has, has commenced, as most of you should be aware, by just driving on the Quaker Highway, it's brought to our attention that we need a license, uh, first from this Board, and there'll be other state licenses and inspections in process to follow. It's for the, uh, the storage of the twenty-five-thousand-gallon liquid AC vessel. You know, for graphical purposes, it's, uh, it's this tall, moderately tall, uh, tank here. It's twenty-five-thousand gallons. As a condition of the special permit by the Planning Board, a ten percent larger containment tub, so to speak, has been designed. What I've provided here for you is a slab section, slab plan view and section, uh, concrete. It's a foot and a half thick with all the structural reinforcing, and also a typical section view. It's essentially a basement for a house. It's gonna have a four-foot-high inside dimension, thirty feet wide by thirty-two feet deep, will provide us over twenty-seven thousand gallons. It's excess of the ten percent required by the Planning Board as their special permit. So, um, I do believe you have a memo from Chief Kessler in support. I have not seen it, but I've just heard that it has been issued. And we're here to answer any questions you may have and provide any other information you may need.
The, uh, your drawing, your cross-section doesn't show the height of the, of the tower.
Four feet.
Yeah, I know that, but it's not on here.
Yeah, this section, this, this, this drawing was not necessarily intended for this meeting. We thought it would be informational, uh, just to give you, and give you some assurance that the size of the tub around the tank is in fact going to be sufficient in accordance with the special permit of the Planning Board. We give you the depth, we give you the four-feet height.
Okay, so this, this concrete section will not go the whole length of the tank itself.
That's correct.
This is the containment area.
That's the containment area. It's like a...
And that containment area has to contain ten percent of the material or a hundred and ten?
Hundred and ten percent. Ten percent more than the volume of the twenty-five-thousand-gallon tank.
Okay. And the diameter of the tank is fourteen feet?
The diameter of the tank is approximately fourteen feet because the s, that's, it'll be about twelve feet, two inches, the diameter. And the slab, the dimensions of the slab on the plan view show that it's fourteen by fourteen. It's got some, some wiggle room on the thick, the thick part of the slab.
But the inside diameter of the containment is thirty feet?
No. It, the inside diameter, oh, yes. It's not, it, this is a square. The contain, the containment tub is square.
Okay.
Yep, thirty by thirty-two.
Thirty by thirty, okay.
This illustration I helped move.
And just four feet of height provides the hundred and ten percent containment?
Yeah.
Because of the exterior diameter.
Because of the size, correct.
Okay, it's a little deceiving.
It's kinda, it's gonna be like a, like a small, like a moderately sized house foundation. What we've decided to do for appearances is you'll have four feet of depth inside, but on the outside, you'll only have two feet exposure of the foundation.
Okay.
And there'll be some bollards and things to protect people from just wandering and falling in.
Okay. Is the material contained a liquid?
It's a liquid when it's hot.
When it's hot. And at what temperature does it become a liquid?
Two-seventy, mid-to-high two-hundreds.
Okay.
It's maintained at?
All the time?
All the time.
Okay.
When it's in the tank, when it's coming onto the site, and when it's mixed with the product, it's hot, it's a hot-mixed product, so.
Yeah, okay.
Till it cures, it's hot.
Okay. Um, if there is a leak, is there a leak detection system?
Yes, I believe there is.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Uh, three phones, you know, where they are anyways, we'll run it.
Yeah.
Yes, it does, and it's on the safety features, and it has, you know, our console is quite a light with a horn, yeah.
Okay. And at what level is the liquid before the alarm goes off? You know?
On the high end.
Yeah.
Three-twenty.
Three-twenty what?
Three-hundred-twenty degrees Fahrenheit.
No, 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 no. Uh, here, here's the base of your containment.
Hey, Peter, hold on. Mr. Bevel, Mr. Bevelacqua, can you just come up to the microphone and sign it? Thank you.
If it's leaking, at what point does it, two feet, three feet? At what point will it trigger the alarm? Is that what you're asking? If there were a leak?
Yeah, immediately. If the, right away.
Okay.
Immediately.
Is it a float device?
Right next to it. Right, right on the grade. So, as soon as anything goes up to grade, boom.
Okay.
You know, so if there's a small leak, it would, would, uh...
So, there has to be a way of keeping, um, water out of this? Otherwise, if there's water in it, that would set the alarm off too, right?
There's two ways to do that. One way is to put a drain in the bottom.
Okay.
Okay? You know, lever. So, if it's rainwater, it goes out.
Okay.
Now, once you, if, if you ever, I had one for ten years, not a leak, nothing ever dripped. Not even a drop.
Yeah.
So, we let the rainwater out, same, same way.
Sure.
And if we ever did, we, we would just clean it up before we did that. So, if the water got onto something that did leak, we would never open that valve.
Yeah.
Never happened. We'd have to have it pumped, cleaned properly, and then do it. We're thinking that, that seems logical, you know? Gotta let the water out. Either you gotta pump it out, so.
The area between the, the, uh, product tank and the containment is open to the weather?
Yeah, with bollards around it, yeah.
Okay.
Inside, inside too is open.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. You probably have the same, the, you could probably fit three of these containment tanks on the surface area. So, yeah, you've got...
Of the thirty by thirty-two.
Yes, so like you said, it's four feet on the inside and two feet on the outside.
Yep.
You walk around, your hands out, and be inside the containment tub.
Okay. Does the Board have any other questions?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion that the Board approve the application.
We, you have to ask for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I gotta close the hearing. Any other one here for public comment? Chief, do you have anything to add outside of what was in your letter?
Well, I think, uh, just to reiterate to the Board that there is a permitting process as well after the licensing process, both through, uh, the local fire department and because of the size of the tank, the State Fire Marshal's Office will be involved as well for a lot of those safeguards that you were talking about.
There are annual inspections?
There are annual inspections from the State Fire Marshal's Office because the, uh, the tank is ten thousand, more than ten thousand gallons.
Okay, so the State Fire Marshal does it, or you do it?
No, the State Fire Marshal's Office takes care of those inspections.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any other public comment? We'll close the public hearing then.
Motion to grant a permit, uh, for the containment tank as indicated.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good time, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Rules are gonna win, that's what I said. So, good night, guys, thank you.
Great. Um, it's okay with the Board now, I'd like to jump to new business number one, which is the IAC recommendation. It's folks here from Lively Insurance Company. Is it Lively or Vivley?
Lively.
For purposes of the people who might be watching, would you indicate what IAC means?
IAC is the Insurance Advisory Committee, who are looking at our overall insurance rates.
Uh, first off, I'd like to say, uh, my name is Anthony Lively, um, from Lively Insurance, the representative here. Um, we work with the community to evaluate the different health plan proposals and negotiate rates and all that type of, uh, stuff. That's, that's so interesting. Um, but, um, I'd first like to say that the Insurance Advisory Committee here is excellent. They're very, very much engaged in what's going on with health insurance, especially on a municipal level, and also have done a great job looking at the different options that are available, um, and, and been, you know, willing to, to entertain things that we've seen in other communities that have been very pretentious. Uh, so, at first, I'd like to say that it's been excellent working with, with every single one on that Board. Basically, the employees are aware, um, based on, on what's happening with the rates and across the state with health insurance, that, that changes need to be made, and they're necessary. Um, so, we've, we've, what we've done is presented, uh, several options in conjunction with the IAC, things they've wanted to see, ideas that we've come up with, and had quite a few meetings, um, to discuss benefit changes that they would endorse. Um, and basically, they've taken the time to, you know, talk to their membership and, and the people they represent, uh, and make changes or recommend changes, um, that are the most valuable. Um, and I, I think everybody on that Board, um, has invested a lot of time in doing that because a lot of these things are, are not super complicated, but, um, something you really need to delve into to, to really understand, and I think they've done a great job in doing Um, so basically, um, these rate changes are recommendations for two thousand and fifteen. They're based on the rates from this year because we won't have those rates available yet. So, the different changes and things outlined on these pages are rates that are, that are now, or are coming up, um, for two, the two thousand and fourteen year. So, we've looked at these changes now to give us a gauge on, on where that would, would fall, uh, in years moving forward. Um, the first spreadsheet that we prepared, um, is basically a recap of all the plans that are offered, uh, the rates and, and who's on those plans. Um, and it just kinda gives you a, a snapshot view, uh, of the different benefit structures and, and who's on what and, and that type of thing. So, that's one of those things that you can kind of evaluate, just to give you an idea of where everybody's at.
Before you go to the next page.
Sure.
I see that you, you show the rates for both individuals and families, but for only the Fallon Select Care.
No, no, I think it's, uh...
Select and Direct.
Right here, Peter.
Because the...
Isn't there an individual family line across up top?
If you go up, uh, the next line, the reason why it's...
Does that make sense? That's for that particular point in here, if I'm reading this correctly. And then these are individual and family rates for that one?
It's just two different plans from, from Fallon.
Oh, okay, okay. So, we're showing two things.
So, basically, what that is, Fallon Direct Care is a smaller network of doctors that provides a, a substantial discount for employees that enroll in that. Um, so, the, the town has made that available, um, in order for people that are, are willing to move to those plans. It, it saves them money, and it also saves the town money. So, you can see, um, with the open network, plans are above that, um, and it kinda goes over, you know, what, what the benefits are and what's covered and...
And the town is offering all of these plans?
They are.
And the companies will write it, even though there are only, in one case, only three subscribers?
They will. Um, that plan, I believe, is a PPO plan, which you're required to offer.
Okay.
Um, because it provides out-of-network coverage.
You're saying, just so I'm understanding, the rates that we're looking at, these rates are effective as of July first of this year?
They are.
Where they're the recommended ones, and they are subject to change before July first?
The, those are the rates that are, um, are proposed.
What's proposed means they're, they're not gonna change?
They're, no, they're locked in. So, I think that's the, yeah, best way to say it.
Good.
And then the, the next sheet, what we did is, um, we've kind of broken down the benefits and, and kinda look at overall costs, um, for both Fallon and Blue Cross, um, and then kinda tally that up to total costs, um, for both active and retirees, and kinda totaled out, so where everything is right now, and then kinda taken that for this year and where everything would be, um, after the change is recommended. So, you can see, basically, it's, there's a, a, close to a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar savings by making the recommended, uh, changes. Um, and you can see, uh, detail on the bottom of the sheet that kinda details those different changes.
What's the general impact, uh, from the first page, based on what the current employees have? Is there an incremental increase that the employee's gonna take to get these savings, or is this a net, net?
Um, oh, yes.
Equal service than what they currently have?
There, there's plan changes that, that will be associated with that. So, there's, there's a twenty-dollar office visit, a deduct, a small, uh, individual and family deductible, um, a hundred-dollar ER, and then the Board is also elected to recommend, um, a buy-up for anybody on a more expensive plan than the HMO. So, if they go to the, uh, Blue Choice or the Blue Care Elect, the Board is, is frozen, basically, recommend a freeze on that dollar amount, um, so that ev, everybody pays the same. A little bit confusing, but basically, the most that they recommend is what the contribution would be on the thousand-dollar Blue Cross plan. So, anything over and above that would no longer be subject to the current split. A little bit confusing, I can kinda go back over that, um, if anybody's...
What's, what is reimbursements?
Reimbursements are, um, the, the plan that's offered is a high deductible plan.
Okay.
And many of those, um, copayments and deductibles right now are reimbursed to the employee. And this is, this is created last year, um, the, the IAC...
So, in effect, we're in effect, a kind of self-insuring deductible?
That, that portion of deductible, that's the best way to...
Okay.
And, and last year, um, the Board recommended everybody move to that plan, which generated about a four-hundred-thousand-dollar savings. Um, so, that, that's one milestone that, that the IAC has already accomplished, and that was something that worked out, uh, well. And, um, this year, we kinda backed into that, and that provided, continuing with that arrangement, provided about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar savings.
Okay. So, what's the next step with this, with this plan, Sean, from, from the Town, from the Town's perspective?
Well, I mean, all this is in, in, well, I think it's, the IAC has brought, brought all this back to its members, correct, Anthony?
That's, yeah, that's what they've done, so they've...
So, these, these, these rates will go into effect. I mean, there's no, there's nothing, nothing has changed, so it's not requiring a vote from, from...
The Board or any action from...
The only action item that's sort of on the, on the horizon has to do with retirees, Medicare Part, Part B, and that would be changing the employee contribution, um, which has been something talked about over the last few years, 'cause earlier, uh, up until a couple of years ago, up until a year, year ago, it required adoption of a state statute, which is now not, not required anymore, so. But that's gonna end up, uh, in, in, in actual two thousand and fifteen budget sort of, or so, sorry, contract negotiations, it's gonna be, end up being part of the CBA talks. So, as far as the, as far as the Town is concerned, and the employees, these are the rates that they're looking at in July, and everyone is on board.
And these numbers that, uh, are projected for subscribers are based on what's currently enrolled this year and assuming continuation?
Correct.
In, in action.
We did have, you know, open enrollment, what, a couple of weeks ago, so, and you didn't see any substantial changes and...
My belief has, uh, still...
Okay, so the open enrollment plan is still open, but yeah, but this is based on, but even minimal change, it, it's my understanding, minimal changes, you know, over, overlap, or changes from, uh, plan to plan are, i- isn't gonna affect the rates, correct?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, yeah. So, as Anthony said earlier, the rates are locked, no matter what happens.
So, affirm for me, the key takeaway is that this, next year, we should be saving two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and sixty-three cents over what we paid this year in insurance, if everyone maintains the same level of coverage and we don't add...
Any idea what the outlook is going to be when Obamacare is implemented?
As far as the employer mandate, which is a big part of the bill, um, which du, shouldn't, we've kind of looked at many parts of that, we had, there's been no guidance on the effect of the bill on municipalities in regards to that. Um, but basically, you've, all the thresholds are satisfied, so the amount that the Town pays for health insurance and the plan they offer should be sufficient to satisfy that mandate.
Now, that part I understand. I'm talking about the cost overall.
The cost, yeah, that, and that's something that we discussed at the last meeting. Um, basically, that there, there's gonna be some assessments, um, and those are assessed on the health plans, which then assess them to the users or the, whoever pays the bill. So, whether it's a business or a town.
That's us.
Exactly. So, we're, we're gonna see, uh, a graduated percentage, uh, over the next few years from one to four percent load on the rates, um, is, is what everybody's kinda talking about in terms of what we're expected to see. Um, you can certainly, I can certainly do an analysis of it, and I, I've done that for, um, a couple of, of different people involved in that. But it's not gonna really kick in till probably two thousand and seventeen, where you'll see, you know, two or three percent load, uh, based on those assessments.
And the, the tax on medical devices?
The tax on medical devices, um...
That's really the one question.
Could you come to the podium? Sorry, dragged you up.
Laura Lively, and, uh, it's basically going to affect the user more than the actual premium ta, premium amount.
Well, um, the, so, the portion that, uh, the user is going to pay the premium, if they receive some medical device, a wheelchair or something else, um, the end-user doesn't pay that directly. They, it's paid through the premiums, which come, which is shared by the user and the municipality or the company, right?
You're correct.
So, you know, the companies don't actually, the, the manufacturers of the devices that are taxed, don't actually pay the tax. They just pass it through. They collect it from the insured, and they collect it from the company that provides the insurance, um...
I haven't, I haven't heard any guidance on that specifically.
Well, there's no guidance. I mean, there's a tax imposed on something, that tax is ultimately paid by the user.
Yeah.
And the user are the people who are covered by the insurance and, and the company that subsidizes the insurance costs.
Usually, the insurance company will give us a list of the mandates.
Yeah.
And a cost, an approximate cost.
Yeah.
Per mandate. I have not seen that one come through yet.
But that, see, that's not a mandate, that's a tax.
Correct, but it is...
Which will tend to raise the cost of medical devices.
Okay.
Which cost is then borne by the insurance carrier, who has to recover that cost from the employee and the employer. There's no magic here, right?
True. Very true.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda I would like to take, six-thirty, is the Citizens Inquest Committee. So, um, to provide some information for you on this, uh, Mr. Brill has, has requested that, uh, the Board consider the creation of a committee to be comprised of a total of three, five, or seven citizens, as you saw in your packet handout. And the purpose is, uh, separate from Town Employees, a committee of Uxbridge Individuals that submits Town Public Records requests and reviews past or present public records requests, studies of past Town documents audits, and double checks these records, investigates matters within the Town and other legal, um, right citizens have in accordance with MGL. Uh, the, uh, Mr. Brill has asked that the Board consider, uh, whether this be a group that works on behalf of the BOS, or be a, a private group. He's asked for, uh... and reviews past or present public records requests, studies of past town documents audits, and double checks these records, investigates matters within the town and other legal, um, right citizens have, in accordance with MGL. The, uh, Mr. Brill has asked that the board consider, uh, whether this be a group that works on behalf of the VOS, or be a, a private group. He's asked for, uh, the resources of the town from a standpoint of using town hall facilities within a reasonable timeframe of business hours, and occasional use of the photocopy machine to make copies, as part of, uh, the resources that he expected from the town. I brought this to the attention to the board, because he asked me, um, if this is something that I would, uh, I would, uh, bring in front of the board, and what the board thought of this, and speaking on behalf of, as an individual on the board, uh, I didn't think it was appropriate to answer myself, so that's why it's here in front of us today. Mr. Brill, you have anything else to add at, at a high level of describing the group, or what you've included in that?
Well, you obviously got the handout that I gave, so, pretty much the handout, uh, pretty much describes everything. Uh, the only thing I just wish to add is, um, is basically in order to, for this idea to exist, uh, one of the, it needs to have some type of connection to the town, and that's basically where it needs to be some type of quasi-town committee per se, or at least a vote from the Board of Selectmen to create it. If this was a private committee, uh, done by myself and a bunch of people, and had nothing to do with the town, I think the, the purpose of creating the committee, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be able to achieve the goal. So it needs to have, be somehow connected to the town, and that's the reason why it's, you know, asked to be in the Board of Selectmen, and basically urge your support to just vote to create the committee. And as I wrote down on my documents, the only costs, so, so basically, you know, to keep the costs as low as possible to, uh, would be just occasional use of the photocopy machine, and obviously trying to schedule meetings within, you know, business hours.
I read this very carefully. You mentioned the goal, what, what exactly is the goal?
The, the goal of the, of this, uh, proposed Citizen Inquest Committee is basically to be, consist of three, five, or seven citizens to review.
That's, that's the mechanics, what is the goal? What are you trying to accomplish?
The goal is basically to look into certain town matters, or any requests from citizens, that something.
So this will be a standing committee?
I'm sorry, to be the what?
A permanent committee?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
The Board of Selectmen does not have the authority to establish a permanent committee. The charter authorizes the Board of Selectmen to appoint a non-permanent committee, a temporary committee.
Oh, okay.
But we don't have the authority to appoint a.
Oh, okay.
Permanent committee.
Oh, okay.
But all the, the other things you mentioned.
Yeah.
You're perfectly free to form a committee.
Right.
For any purpose you want. And if you want to be the chairman, since you started, you can be the chairman.
Yeah.
And if you want to submit public records requests, y- you can do that.
Right, right, yeah.
Anybody can do that.
Right.
So I don't understand, apart from the fact that we can't do it.
Right.
What you would gain by it, what is it you're going to investigate? Do you have a object of your investigation in mind?
Y- yes, yeah, actually.
What?
Well, Jay and I had actually discussed one item in particular.
And what was the item?
And that was the Burnett Mill Fire.
Okay, that, that's what I thought.
And there's additional items as well.
Okay.
That other people have. But the, but the goal of the committee is to basically study the documents, and these are, you know, private residences.
Yes.
Citizens, to study the documents, and then come back to the Board of Selectmen with basically a, um, answer, or, um, like it says, basically to, to check into matters and, and provide a, uh, feedback to the Board of Selectmen.
And how do we check into matters? See, the board doesn't have the power to.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the board.
We don't have subpoena powers.
Oh, oh, I know that.
If you subpoena powers.
Oh, I know, I understand that, yes.
We can't compel people to testify.
Right. Right, correct, well, that's why the committee would do all the research, which means that we would go, and I shouldn't, and, and I actually had, I don't have it with me tonight, but Jay and the town manager have seen all the records I have from the Burnett Mill Fire, so private citizens would, would read through public records, and then make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen based upon.
To do what?
To, if, if certain, if, if certain items require further action, then that would be something that we would come back to the board from. So we would say, we went through the paperwork, and this is.
And how does the board?
Yes.
Put into effect the certain actions that you're looking for? What, what are we going to do with that information?
Well, basically, a recommendation would be stated, and then it would be the Board of Selectmen to vote to take an additional action. So for example, if we thought that something should be further investigated, or we thought that something should be checked into, a private committee can't do that, the Board of Selectmen would need to be the authority to be able to authorize the second step per se.
We, we don't have the authority to command the police chief, for instance, or the fire chief.
Right.
To investigate a certain.
Right, but we're not talking about that, we're.
My understanding, Mike.
Yeah, yes, yeah, maybe Jay can clarify what I, what him and I discussed.
What you had suggested was you'd like to have this committee do inquest into certain matters. Uh, if there was something of substance, write it up, present it to the board, and then let the board take action on it, on, instead of having the committee go directly to the next step in the chain, whether it's, you know, to the magistrate, to the local court, whatever, have it come on behalf of the town, carrying more weight, that's, that's what you'd ask.
Correct, right, right, because if I go to the police chief and say, hey, I, or, or the fire chief, or whoever, and say, hey, I checked into this, they're going to say, well, that's nice, but if it came from the Board of Selectmen, it carries more weight, exactly what Jay said.
I'm not sure that's the case, however.
Yes.
I would hope.
Yes.
That if anybody, anybody.
Yes.
Presents the police chief, or the fire chief, or the fire marshal, or the Attorney General's office, with evidence of some wrongdoing, evidence I'm talking about.
Yes.
They would look at it and take action.
Well, that's the.
I would, I would hate to think that they would take action simply by virtue of the fact that Board of Selectmen said, gee, we want you to take action on this.
Well, I've actually already run into that. I've already approached some agencies outside, and they say, well, why hasn't the town contacted us? And I say, I don't know, and I've talked to Sean about it a few times.
What, tell, tell me exactly what it was that you found and went to an agency, and they said, well, why haven't the, hasn't the town done something?
It was regarding the Burnett Mill Fire.
Okay, and who did you go to?
I went to the ATF.
Which is what?
Federal agency, alcohol, tobacco, and firearms.
Okay, and they are the agency that have to do with, um, the Burnett Mill Fire?
Well, they were there, yes, they, they were federal agents that were there.
A lot of people were there, a, a, the agency that would normally investigate mill fires.
Right.
And they told you, you gave them some evidence, and they told you.
Yes, I had a discussion with them, and they, and I just.
The Board of Selectmen would have more weight in bringing this to their attention, but they wouldn't listen to you?
Well, the issue, the, the issue is they couldn't understand how a citizen had checked into a certain, I'm not going to give all the details, but I had a citizen that checked into something, and they said, oh, okay, well, why hasn't anybody from the town, town contacted us? And I've, and I've had several conversations with Sean, and, and basically, I was actually asking Sean, saying, well, why couldn't Sean make this phone call, or talk to an outside agency, or whatever, and then?
Nothing prevents him from doing that.
Right, but, but what I got out of it is, is Sean, Sean obviously has enough to do, and says, well, you know, I mean, I'm not disrespecting Sean, but I'm just saying that he says, I have enough to do, could somebody else do it? So I mean, so if the committee did the duties and the, and the legwork, and just reported, like, like Jay said, to the, to the board, and said, this is the results, and then this is what we'd like to do as step, as Part B, then it would just be so much easier for the Board of Selectmen to make that phone call, or help with Step B. Because I don't see why.
I'm not sure.
Private citizens have to, have to do, because the, the group is already doing, going to be doing all this legwork anyhow. So I mean, why would it be the responsibility of citizens to talk to ATF agents, when somebody from the town should be talking to the ATF agents? Or to the Department of Justice, or whoever it is?
I disagree, disagree with that. Any citizen who has evidence, valid evidence.
Right.
Of some wrongdoing.
Right.
Irrespective of who they are.
Right.
Then they should expect to receive action by the appropriate agency.
Well, that would seem to make sense, yes, but when I talk to them, it, they're like, well, you're just a citizen, why? That's, that's what I'm saying. It, it needs to come from somebody, it needs to come some, somebody, it needs to come from somebody connected to the town.
So you have to convince me that, and I'm not saying it's not possible.
Right, no, I understand.
You have to convince me that you had valid evidence of some wrongdoing, and you went to the ATV, A.
ATF.
ATF, as you said. And they disregarded the evidence simply because you're a private citizen.
That's true, correct. Well, I, well, I actually, I, I, you and I have already talked about the Burnett Mill Fire, I told you the stuff that I found through that.
Yes, you told me.
Through that evidence.
You showed me the photograph.
And then you said, and you said to me, what did you do? And I just, and then I asked you, well, what are you going to do as a selectman? And you, and you haven't, it's never been put on the agenda, it's never been discussed?
The only thing that I learned from you, you said, you showed me a photograph of a gas can.
Yes.
And that was evidence of starting a fire.
Right.
I have gas cans on my property.
Yeah.
Sometimes they have gas in it, sometimes they have diesel fuel, sometimes they're empty.
Right.
But that's not evidence of a fire. So that's, I'm talking about.
Right, well, that's, I, I, well, I don't want to get into the details, right, let, Jay, go ahead, yes.
But I want to, I don't want to get into the details of any cases.
Right, right, that's why I wanted, didn't want to say too much, yes.
Merit on, on this is, one, Peter said, um, anything that's going to be longstanding committee has to be, uh, created via vote of town meeting.
Town manager. Town manager can establish committees.
I couldn't establish the Community Gardens.
Couldn't start, establish Community Gardens, it's got to be a town meeting.
Because you want to start it as, as a bylaw. You tried to have it as a bylaw, and it wasn't a bylaw. It didn't establish a bylaw.
No, no, prior, prior to that. Prior to that, the original first step in the community, the reason why it went to that fall town meeting was Sean tried to establish it as a committee, and we needed to bring it to town meeting.
We had to bring it to town.
We had to bring it to town meeting, that's why they went through that process. We can, we can double check.
Again, it has to do whether it's the opinion that it's, it's an, it's official governmental agency. Remember the conversation, we, we had a governmental agency, and you didn't support the town manager's ability to create that particular, um, committee, because it wasn't governmental in nature, which the charter would have allowed. The other mechanism for formation of town committees, going governmental or whatever, in this case, it would be non-governmental, would be via, via bylaw, so I would say that Michael would need to basically go about the same process that we did ultimately, for successful creation of the Community Gardens, which is ultimately going to be finally successful. Hopefully, well, we'll see, it's going to get put to a vote tomorrow.
You can establish a committee to advise you.
Right.
Of a permanent nature, okay? That committee then reports to you, and you make a decision based on information that committee, and other information you might have.
Right.
Okay? You could do the same thing in this case.
Which is not what he's requesting, because I think Mr. Brill's trying to make, interact with the top, so to speak, as much as possible.
As, as it was first related to me.
Yeah.
It was going to be related to the Burnett Mill Fire, which would be a one-time thing. But your letter indicates some kind of a standing committee, which we just don't have the authority to do.
Well, 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 let me ask you a question, what is the, could you explain to, because I'm not familiar with what you're, now I'm familiar with what you're saying, it's not that you mentioned, what, what is actually is a temporary committee?
It's not, it's not a permanent committee.
So it's something that, it's, it's.
For one item, to look into a thing. And once that's done, then the committee is disbanded.
So could, so was it possible to create a one-time Citizens Inquest Committee, not specific to the Burnett Mill matter, for a certain period?
To report to the, yes, it is possible.
To report to the Board of Selectmen, but for a certain period of time? Say, like, a one-year timeframe, and that's it?
Yes.
Or a two-year, or something? Is there any, and that's my other question, is there any limit on this temporary, the word temporary? Is that meaning months, years, scope, or just?
The, the charter doesn't specify.
Okay.
But, it would seem to me that a committee organized to look into a thing.
Yeah.
And given a fixed date.
Okay.
By which to report.
Yeah.
Would necessarily be a temp, a non-permanent committee.
Okay.
Okay? However, I can tell you, I would have no interest in forming such a committee for, for this purpose.
Typically, it goes in the reverse direction, right? It's, the board asks to get a committee created to look at something of their interest. And then, then that'll come back up. In this, in this scenario, um, I don't see an advantage, and the same thing with Community Gardens, I feel the same way, I don't see an advantage of this being a, a town-sponsored committee, because any citizen at any time can collect information, put a report, address it to the Board of Selectmen, the town manager, the pope if they wanted to, and then the board ultimately has a, um, an opportunity to take action or not take action, based, based on what that report is. When Mike and I talked, one of the things that we wanted to get out of today was having an opportunity to explain what he was trying to do with the board. And secondly, um, whether this goes public, uh, being a committee of the board, or whether he takes this to be a private committee, give him a chance to at least advertise what he's trying to do, to see if there's interest.
Well, I think what I'd like to do is, I'd like to, um, then, I would, I mean, since there is an opportunity to create a temporary committee, I would like the board then to create and vote on a temporary committee. Obviously, I don't have a timeframe for that, but I still feel the committee should, the board should vote to, to create the committee. But if we, if we can do it with a temporary committee, that would be the like, the way I would like to go. So that gives you the authority to take a vote and go forward with that, and then I can come back at some other point in time, or Mr. Bagdad Zierin can give me the documents.
But the result, I think the results don't change, right? Whether it's a, whether you submit that report as a, as a temporary committee of the Board of Selectmen, or as a citizen's group, it still goes to the board, and the board's either going to take action or not take action on it.
Right, you're, you're saying if a committee, if a.
So I don't understand the net gain that you're going to get from, from having this committee versus just going out and doing it.
Use of resources.
Town hall, but I, but my understanding is you can use town hall resources as a private group, as long.
Right, by the photocopy website, I think those are two.
And the only other thing too, I mean, in regards to what you're saying, is, is I had submitted at least three, three agenda requests through Beth Pittman back a long time ago, to discuss the Burnett Mill matter, and was denied three times. So I mean, so I, so I, I understand what you're saying, but if I, if I already applied three times for that, and I was denied, whether it was for personal reasons, or who knows what, here we are, what are we here, three years later, and I still was never put on the agenda?
You're subject to that discretion of the chair anyways, which is, I don't know if that solves the issue.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, so if we did all this, so if all this legwork was done, and we never got put on the agenda, then what would be the point of doing anything? That's why I, that's why I.
No, no, under the charter.
Yes.
If someone wants to be on the agenda, or in fact, if you want to call a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and the chairman doesn't want to do that, one-third of the members, which on a five-member board is two members, can say, we want a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
That was done, that was done as well, and that didn't happen.
Well, then, then apparently, there weren't two members of the board who wanted to do it. I mean.
Right.
At some point, um, the body is a body. Committees in general, I, I'm not comfortable with establishing a committee to do a certain function. And just saying, who wants to be on the committee? And people raise their hands and say, okay, you're on the committee. If, if something is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, I think the Board of Selectmen should do it. If expertise in a particular area is needed.
Yeah.
Then, to me, it's certainly appropriate for the board to find individuals who have the required knowledge to advise the board. You see? Rather than just picking people at random, who wants to be on the committee, I want to be on the committee.
Well, no, this would, the people wouldn't be picked at random, it would be people with, who, part of this committee would include people who were affected by the Burnett Mill Fire, who had businesses in the former Burnett Mill. So there's, so there's a bunch of people that are.
Well, I don't know, is I would choose those to be on the committee.
They would be picked by the board at that point, right?
But I wouldn't necessarily want to pick those people, I would have them to provide information, evidence, if you will.
Right.
But I would pick people who have some expertise in evaluating this kind of thing, you see?
Right.
But that's just my.
Now, what about, so, so if the committee idea wouldn't work out, what about if there was an agenda item put on the agenda for an executive session, and then I, myself, came in with, or with committee members, and then discussed it that way with the Board of Selectmen?
It has to get there, I think, if you have evidence, and that you think is compelling to the board to take action, write it up in a packet, deliver it to all members of the board, and then ask for responses to whether this is something that could be put on the agenda, and the board then would respond to that, to that item. And as Peter said, that two-thirds, uh.
Need a committee to do that.
Member, uh, board, uh, two-thirds of the member vote to approve it, or the chair just decides it's inappropriate, and it'll be on there.
Right.
I don't think we even need that. If someone gives us evidence that we think is valid, and needs to be looked into, I would say that we don't have a meeting about it. We forward it to the appropriate agency, and said, we've received this information.
Well, that's, well, that's part of the.
That may be credible, please look at it, and let us know if you think it's credible too.
Well, well, that's actually, actually what the purpose of the committee is, is to do exactly. Well, that's actually what the purpose of the committee is, is to do exactly what you just said. But there are, there are sensitive issues with certain things that would, in the future that I have on my list, that the towns, that the town or the board of selectmen could not investigate these matters, because it would be considered a conflict for town people to investigate it. That's why I need, would, certain recommendations might need to say, "Okay, well, this should be forwarded to the attorney general's office, this should go to the ATF, this should go to the department of justice to check into."
Which is the argument why it should be a private, private committee, because you don't want it affiliated with, with the, with the people on the, on the board. I, I feel-
Right, but coming to the board and providing the recommendations, there's no conflict, conflict of interest there. Because I would, somebody or myself would just be coming to the board, explaining the recommendation, and then you would take a vote and then that would be it.
I know.
You're not putting your hands in the, in the pot, in the pot per se, you know, to avoid any-
Unless they're subject to the investigation and then they're already in the pot. Their hand's not in, the whole body's in the pot.
Well, well, in this case, there wouldn't, I mean, the selectmen wouldn't be out of any investigation, right. It'd be town employees or anybody else, you know.
My feeling on this is, I think this is better served as a private committee, whose results and findings are promoted to the board and above the board to the next step. And that way, if it's going to the ATF from you, and then all of a sudden they hear the follow-up from the board, because the board thinks it's appropriate, now they've got two touchpoints to, to verify the data.
Right.
As far as accommodating meetings and such, there, there's a form for doing that, photocopying stuff, you know, I think if you, that's an open can of worms.
But on, on this particular subject, Burnett Mill Fire.
Right.
You've already, you have all the documents, I'm sure.
I have over four, four thousand pages, and I have the records request from the town, and I also got the records request from the state fire marshal's office. So the issue is, right, so I can't go, even go to the state fire marshal's office to ask them questions, because the documents are what is being questioned. Their records and the town's records.
Okay.
That's why, that's why the federal agents need to, need to be part of this matter, above, way above everybody else.
We would, rarely is a municipality going to go right to the federal government, you, you know that. Our first point of contact and if something of that nature is going to be the state fire marshal's office.
Right, but you can't go there, because it's a conflict of interest with the records.
But that's not our call to make.
Right, right, yeah. Well, I mean, the other thing, you, you had said to me one time on some other issue, you had said, "Well, why don't", you would ask me, "Well, why don't I call the attorney general's office and something?" And I, and I said, "Well, why can't you call?" Because if I discover something in the town's records, I'm just a citizen. Why is it my job to report that there's a problem to the state or federal agencies? It should be somebody from the town that says, "Yeah, you're right, I should call somebody to check into that."
But you honor-
And that's why I'm, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm here doing all your work.
But what you don't want to do is supply the town, me, the town employee, with any evidence.
Right.
You don't want to do that.
I will give you, I offered, I offered to-
Because that's, because now you're compromised. I, I, you know, I understand what you're trying to do here, so.
Right, if you ask me for the stuff, I give you a copy of it, I mean, well, actually, I mean-
If you're asking him to vouch for you, you got to give him something to vouch to, to back up with, or else you're blind faithing, asking the town manager or the board to go ahead and submit this for without-
Right, yeah.
Their own due diligence.
Well, I mean, Sean was the one that got me the box of the town's Burnett Mill records. So I mean, you already, I mean, is that, was that, is that box still in your office or no? Oh, it's still in your office from the same place, okay. I, I mean, I, I don't care. I mean, if I have to sit down with the town manager, but I, that's the thing, why I'm trying to create the committee, because if Sean says, "Well, yeah, I work with you on that," then I got to sit down and discuss this with him, which would be time-consuming and taking away from his time. That's why it's much easier to have a separate group of people do all the legwork and just saying, "Here's ten pieces of paper on the outcome."
You can absolutely, and I would, I would, if that's, if that's the, the action, I would encourage you to, to do that with that group and then present the findings, but I don't, I really don't understand the need for, or why you'd want to have it tied to the same offices that are potentially part of this investigation itself.
Right.
So it'd have the results, do the committee work, get the legwork, produce a, a findings, and then, and then have the findings be addressed by the board.
Right.
Town manager or whoever you want.
Right.
But-
Now, I guess the only thing that would, the only thing left would be, now, what, if we're talking, I mean, I have several other things in mind to check into, and some, and some things would be internal town issues. So I mean, in an, in an internal town issue, it should be either the board of selectmen investigating something that happened in a particular department, or it should be the town manager.
And that's, that might, separately, that happens all the time. We used to get letters consistently about one particular department from outside citizens who would send it to the board of selectmen mailbox. We'd get it, we'd read into it, we'd follow up, and, and that's how the, the process just proceeds. There was no committee for it, and I would encourage the same thing. If there's other matters, you got to write the letter and you got to put enough substance in the letter that people can react. If, if it's just a blanket letter that says, "Hey, I've got some information, but I'm not telling you what it is in the letter," most of the time, people aren't going to move it forward, because there's got to be a, a way to filter this stuff.
Right. But I, but I got, but I guess I'm confused, is if that was done, then who would, who would be responsible for the investigation? Like, for example, there's one particular police department matter that was just brought to my attention last week.
If it's brought to the board, the board can engage the town manager to run investigations on their behalf. That's what the charter says.
The charter authorizes it.
Yep. So the town manager would conduct the investigation, you mean?
On behalf of the board.
Not necessarily.
Or, or on his own.
The, the board of selectmen have the power to initiate investigations of any department or agency in the town. We can do that. That won't change into the new charter.
But does that mean that you can, yeah, but the board cannot investigate town employees, correct? If there was a matter with a town employee, that would go on Sean, correct, investigating the matter?
It would depend on what the nature of the quote "matter" was. If it's something that has to do with work-related things, then the manager would do that.
Okay.
If it's something that goes beyond that, it's possible that the board of selectmen would be involved. Normally, i- if, where the particular employee is hired by the town manager, it would be the manager who would-
Now, what about if it was a criminal issue? A crime was committed?
Well, the same thing.
Yeah, but Sean's, but Sean's not authorized, wouldn't be authorized to invest, investigate that, yeah?
Anybody can investigate a crime.
Right.
We don't have police powers, but anyone can investigate a crime.
Right.
If a crime has been committed and you, anyone has valid information, evidence that a crime has been committed, the normal course of action is to go to the police chief. If you get no satisfaction, then you can go maybe the county sheriff.
Right. Well, well, I'm talking about an investigation against a police employee who's already a police officer, so you're not going to go to the chief of police to, to investigate a police officer.
Yeah, I mean, good heavens, of course, that's the first thing.
About an employee, you go to their manager.
Somebody works for the town manager, then they're, they're doing, in a part of time, it does happen, the town manager investigates.
Yeah, but there was stuff, there was stuff, there were matters in the past that there's alleged issues of missing money and this and that that I've brought to the board's attention for the past three years, that I've had the records on, and nobody's ever investigated the missing money, so. And everybody just keeps saying, "Well, talk to the town manager, talk to the selectmen, talk to this, talk to that," and here we are, three years later, and nobody's ever figured out where the missing money went.
I don't remember during my-
Well, it's because I didn't told you what, what the matter is.
Oh, okay.
I've, certain people know certain things, but, but I'm not going to get into the details because, because that's basically-
This is what my recommendation is, because I think we got to move on to the next topic. If you want action from the board, request the action, put it in every board member's mailbox. Send it to every member, and that way, either the chairman is aware of it, and all the other members are aware of it, and if it's burning enough for the board members, the two-thirds will say, "Why have we not discussed this? This has been in the read file, or this has been in the mailbox."
And the more specific, the better. You got to stick with specific.
Right.
As opposed to, you know, conspiracy or something like that. It's got to be as specific as possible with specific evidence, because that's what's going to compel the board to act.
Right, okay. And the only last thing I had is what, what happens if, 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 if I turn in a packet of evidence to the board and the town manager requesting that a certain employee be suspended and asked for an investigation?
You can't request a suspension, that, they work for the town manager. If anybody's going to suspend somebody, he will.
You can't suggest discipline. You can suggest to, to evidence, to look into the evidence.
I mean, I, like, I'm not going to say what this example is, but I already have the evidence. So if I, so you're saying if I give it to Sean and Sean goes, "Whoa, okay", and then some, Sean's going to do something? I'm, I'm just looking for a way to connect, yes.
You're convinced the evidence is, is, is one hundred percent guilty, and you-
Well, well, because I already have it.
Saying, if I hear you correctly, is that as soon as you give it to Sean, you expect him to see it exactly the same way you see it. And if he doesn't, then you, then you think that there's been some sort of ignorance to the issue.
We've talked about this, and this is why oftentimes I've urged you to go outside of town channels, to go civilian channels.
Well, that's what I did. Well, that's exactly what I did. I called the ATF, and the ATF said, "Well, why is a citizen telling us this information? Why isn't the town contacted us?"
And your, your response was-
And I even sent them the paperwork. So I mean, I mean, I mean, it would just be like me telling the ATF agent, "Why don't you come down to the town hall and I'll meet with the town manager, and the three of us can sit in a room and I'll explain it to the ATF agent with Sean." I mean, I'm at-
And if the ATF agent calls Sean, I'm pretty sure he's going to probably sit down with him. I, I would hope you would. If he doesn't, then-
Somebody's in trouble.
So I mean, I, I don't know, I, I mean, I guess, I guess, I guess what I'd like to do is if, if you cannot create the committee, then as long as you can, you know, assure me that there's a way that I could, if we check into something and I bring your report, that I can be put on the agenda. That's, I'm trying to be as honest and simple as possible. Because I just don't want to come to you and say, "Oh, you're denied, you're denied," and I'm wasting my time.
There's two ways to get on the agenda.
Way and do something to help me.
Can put it on, and I'm not going to be the chairman next, so, the next meeting. So whoever the chairman is here, can either put it on at their own discretion or do you convince two-thirds of the, of the board members to put it on?
One-third.
One-third, sorry.
And call a special, two meetings and call a special meeting.
I would say, Mike, your deficiency so far in my, has been, you keep your information close, right? At some point, you got to give it up. If you really got something, you've got, you're going to have to give it. I know you don't want to. I know you have your reasons for not wanting to, but at some point, in order for anything to get anywhere.
Right.
That's something you're going to have to be willing to do.
Well, there are, well, there are also some matters that are already, records are already on the internet, so. I mean, some of that has already been exposed on the Exbridge Mass Info website, so.
But say you got a witness or something like that, you're going to have to give them up. If you want something done about it, you have to give them up.
Right, yeah.
So, to bring this conclusion, Mike, I'd encourage you, any, any investigations that, that your group partakes, you do it outside the scope of, unless the board feels differently, but do it outside the scope of a, a formal committee here. But the results, make sure you not only copy the chairman, but send a copy to all the board members. That's your best chance of making sure it's not being rerouted or ignored. And then, if five people don't take up the issue.
Right.
And you don't hear from them, clearly they didn't think there was enough compelling evidence, and you might want to follow up on them as to why and what they were missing and what they would like to see. But otherwise, um-
Generally speaking, if you send somebody to, if you give some information to Tracy and ask her to make copies for the board members and the manager, she will do that.
Right. I mean, the only-
Assuming that it's not eight thousand pages.
Right. And the, and the only, I mean, one of, the only question, I, I understand, Jay, what you're saying, but the only question I have with that is if I give you evidence that, say, a, a town employee did wrong, if I give that evidence to the board of selectmen, it's copied and put in the packets, at some point in time in the, I'm just hypothetically thinking into the future, what happens if Sean says, "Well, this should be checked into," or the board says, "This should be checked into"? Because the only way to discipline a town employee would be through an executive session. Because that's what happened in the issue with freighters before. But the problem is, is the evidence has already been exposed to the public, to the board of selectmen, so how would then?
It doesn't, stuff goes into the read file. The read file isn't made public because it contains sensitive-
Oh, okay.
Nature.
Because you would, because you would have-
On the agenda, it's either going to end up in public or executive session at discretion, or at, based on the, the interpretation of mass general law for what's worthy of executive session and what's not.
Right.
Board of selectmen do not, we do not, what was the word? We do, we do not, not punish, discipline, we do not discipline employees. That's the manager's job.
Right, correct, yeah. Right. But like in one case, I'm going to be given your personnel records, that, you know, that are secret. So obviously, you would have access to personnel records.
We see that all, we can see that, that's, it's part of our read file. We have that, if we were going to bring it to a meeting like tonight, if it was personnel records, it would be in an executive session, if it meets the criteria for executive session.
What I'm asking, right, 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 where somebody could determine, saying, "Well, jeez, we're not going to discuss this."
If it's a personnel record and you have it, it was a public record anyways. Otherwise, you shouldn't have it.
Well, not going to give you the answer either way, but yeah, I get stuff.
It's a personnel record, it better be a public record.
I already have Burnett Mill stuff that I'm not even supposed to have, so. Because I, I mean, I have, I, I mean, I, I mean, I already have all the depositions of all the firemen, so.
What, my record, once I have it, I'm free to give it to anybody I want. So, you know, that can happen, I suppose, but.
So, right, I mean, so then you could take it, and then if you say, "Well, this should be," because obviously, if, if something were to go forward with a town employee, then it should properly be discussed in executive session. If, if there were some action to be taken, right.
Hypothetically, yeah, sure.
Right, correct, yeah. No, I agree, yeah.
That's all going to be based on whatever the information is that's presented and what you're asked for.
Again, the board of selectmen does not discipline employees as a general rule. We're not in the loop. The manager does.
Right, but I would be bringing you a pack of, right, but I would be bringing you a packet of information saying, "Action should be taken in this, and, and there should be a discussion, Sean should investigate this employee and have a discussion with him." That's, that's just an example of something I'd be bringing you.
Which wouldn't necessarily happen in executive session, I think is what Peter's saying.
Yeah.
Discussion. The, the board's not involved.
Right, right. But if I brought you something to check into, Sean, then you would need to have a meeting with the employee. I mean, it's not going to be, you know, public at the selectmen's meeting, but.
If I determined that, yeah, that a meeting was-
Correct, yeah. And what I, and I'd like also, I'd like, I'd like to be part of that as well.
That's, that's not, that's not your decision. If it's a personnel matter, then it's going to be up to the manager to-
No, you want a hearing. You want hearings, Mike, and that's not, that's, and we had to talk about this, that's what courts are for. That's why eventually, especially in the criminal matters, go that direction, because that's when you're going to get your day. You're going to get to cross-examine somebody. But in town politics, in town, in municipal matters, you as a citizen don't have that right necessarily. And I'm not going to afford you the rights, simply because I got to preserve the privacy of my employees as well.
Right.
So.
And that's not just with towns, that's with private enterprise too, you know? The hiring authority is the one who conducts the interview and the discipline with the, uh-
Right, yeah. Okay. Would any board of select member be interested in being part of this little private committee? Although, you know, if you're not going to do any vote with anybody in, well, I know you're two of them.
No, not for me, no.
Yeah, I was going to say, you, you already have enough to do. Yeah, all right.
I'm not interested.
I'm on the committee, the board of selectmen.
On committee's enough, huh? So.
I'm not.
So, all right, well, I've learned a lot. I appreciate all your help, and so whatever your thoughts are, I guess, let me know.
Yeah, as I said, if you have the material, submit it to all the board members and, and with as much detail as possible.
And regarding my time, Mike, I don't have time to chase unsubstantiated allegations. But I do have time, it's part of my job to deal, again, in evidence and specifics. So, that's not a good reason to not bring me something, you know, I'm busy, whatever. I mean, if it's, if it's legitimate, needs to get looked into, it falls under my job description, then I got to do it.
Right, yeah. Have, have you ever checked into, remember how you had attended the Exbridge Police Association Union meeting back a while ago and they had read off a, a list of all sorts of police problems they had?
Can you guys take this one offline?
Oh, okay.
Because it's just between you and the manager, and you don't need to, you have to.
All right.
Thanks for coming in, Mike.
All right, no problem, thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Good luck.
Okay, um, next on the agenda. If you guys don't mind, I'm just going to stay with, two folks in the back. Are you here for a specific issue?
Just enjoying the night.
Excellent, okay. Then if you guys don't mind, why don't we just continue through the new business? There's a passover on number three, which is a class-two license, change of manager. Not all the information was in. So, we'll be passing over on that tonight. And to number four, which has endorsed the warrant for the town election on May twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. The warrant was included in your packet. And I'll entertain a motion that the board endorse the warrant for the annual town election on May twenty-first, two thousand thirteen.
So move.
I have a second.
I can't vote for this. The, the summary of the charter question is so misleading. That I just, I just cannot vote for it. I mean, it's, it appears, it may not have been intentionally misleading, but it is absolutely misleading to say that something has been restated as though we just, and restate by definition means say again in a slightly different way, when it's completely changed. I, I can't, I can't vote for it.
I will second it, and I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No. Two, one. Okay, moving on to old business then. Old business one. So at the last meeting, uh- So at the last meeting, we talked about the compensation discussion around town manager. There was some confusion at, at the end of the meeting regarding what the, what the percentage increase was, and, and part of the confusion was based on the 2%, which was in the contract, plus the incremental amount. When I called for the vote, I was discussing the additional on top of the 2%. Peter, I think your intention was the total amount.
Yeah.
And Tracy had mentioned it to me, it was unclear to her when she was taking the notes, and you had mentioned it.
Yeah. I talked to Tim, and he had the same impression.
Me too.
He did as well. So, so that's why it's back on, on the agenda to discuss. So, what, I don't think we have to recall the last vote, just because this vote will just, if we take a new motion, it'll just take into effect over it, correct? Does that make sense? Okay. So, your reasoning then for, you know, I still stand by my, my, my original position, which is I think we gotta get on the right trajectory. At that point, 4% is better than 2%. Bruce, what's, was your impression on this, that you'd be in favor of 4% over the 6% that we had discussed? Which I, I thought it was gonna be in total 6%, in the end, you were talking about 2%.
Total 4%.
A, a total 4%, sorry.
I thought it was 4% myself, but I really don't have a problem with 6% right now, because it's just a matter of a catch-up. And the position itself is, was really underfunded, I think, right from the beginning.
I only hesitate because Tim's not here to participate on this. I would, I would motion that, that the board give the town manager additional 6% pay increase for fiscal year 14. Look for a second.
No second.
Point of order?
Sure.
Additional four.
To a total of 6%.
But the, the motion you just made, your motion said an additional six.
I apologize.
Let's get it right this time.
Yes, please. I move that the board give the town manager an additional 4%, totaling 6% for 2014 fiscal year 14.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thanks. Unrelated to that, though it seems similar on the agenda, Peter, you had made some suggested changes to the town manager's contract. We as a board approved those changes. I'm just looking for the board to authorize me to endorse those changes.
I thought we did that. Did we? Did we neglect to do that?
We neglected to do it, so it's just a housecleaning item.
Okay.
So, I'll entertain a motion...
I move that the board authorize the chairman to sign the revised town manager's employment agreement.
Second.
Which is made a part of the minutes of the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, so fire suppression, and this is more of a follow-on. Last meeting, we, we discussed and voted and approved what the structure was gonna be for the, for the fire suppression. There's some things around that that I think we need to talk about and make sure get carried on before we write up the, the actual policy for fire suppression. So, one of the first things that I would ask is, is this something that, that this board would like to currently take action on tonight? Or would you feel more comfortable waiting till the next board to come in to vote on these items? My preference is, we started this process, we've been debating it. I, I think ramping everyone up into the details of this won't be in the best interest of efficiency for the next board, but I'll defer to you for your opinions as well.
Well, some unanswered, some questions have arisen that really need to be addressed, and I don't know if we're gonna address them tonight, or...
I'm, I'm prepared to at least throw them on the table, and I'd like to get, you know, some decisions from the board saying, all right, what do you want to do with grandfathered?
Yeah.
Hookups? What do you want to do with when we set the rates? Who's gonna actually draft the policy? When's it gonna go into effect?
Yeah.
All those things, the, all the cats and dogs associated with, we haven't even touched.
I know that. But can we do that all tonight?
Can, well, I'm sure there'll be missing stuff, but I think we can at least chip away at, at a good majority of them. And then have enough information in framework that we can go and write the policy. Because if you tried to write a policy right now, there would be too many unanswered questions to do that.
Okay. So to the extent you think you have the answer to some of those open questions, I'm willing to listen.
I think we've got enough, enough to at least have a quick dialogue on them, and if we decide we wanna pass over, because we need more, we'll do that. Does that make sense, Bruce?
Sure.
Okay. So the first is on existing users. Within the policy, I think we need to frame up if someone has already hooked into a fire suppression system, into the, the town's water system for fire suppression. How does this rate affect their current pay structure, which they're on? And knowing that what they've done in the past is they've made a one-time lump sum payment, and then they're, they're not on the hook for any more payments other than their annual inspections.
Yeah.
Which are part of the normal annual kind of service that has to be...
Well, since the fee they paid is substantially in excess of what the new fee is, I mean, it would be criminal to say, in addition to the big amount you paid, we're gonna sock you for annual...
So I'll entertain a motion that existing users are grandfathered in and are not subject to the new payment structure.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Secondary to that, do you wanna, actually, you know, before, do you want to add to that? On a change of property, does it make sense to get them into the new structure? Change of owner of the property, does, does it make sense to get them into the new structure?
Government has a tendency to look at a change of ownership as a way to get a windfalling, you know? I don't like that idea. Seems to me it's being...
My, my, the only reason why I raise it is because we've got, I believe, one person.
Yeah.
And then suddenly does, from an efficiency perspective, down the road, keeping track of that one person and issuing them one bill, does it just, if it ever changes hands, does it make sense to just get everyone on the same plan? Because assuming everyone's gonna be on the same plan, moving forward.
I mean, this isn't, this isn't, this type of improvement to a property isn't a fixture. It can't be taken with you when you move. So it seems, right, I mean, it's real property, it's permanent, so it seems as though, you know, that that would stick with the property, not with the owner.
It stays with the property, not with the owner. Yeah, which is a good argument. You know, I, like I said, I'm really on the fence over this, just because I didn't, I just don't want it to be a billing nightmare, 15, what was that one property? We never wrote it down, and, you know what I mean?
Remember a few years ago, the Commonwealth, in their wisdom, allowed communities to, to establish a 3% tax on people who sell their house? The theory was, everybody sells their house and makes a profit. Therefore, we can get that money and it won't really hurt them.
Not anymore.
Well, of course, the communities that, that established that, they still apply that tax, even though people are losing tons of money
That's right.
on their house. So, any of those things, I, I don't like.
I don't, I don't think...
That's required there. All right. That's fine, I have no, I have no issue with that.
If it's one person, I don't think we should, uh...
Well, even if there were 10, I mean, a principal, it's a principal.
And that can be covered in the language of the...
Okay.
I agree with you on that one, Peter. I don't think it, they've already paid the fee, and that's the way it should be.
The effective date, I, I would recommend that we put this in on the first of fiscal year, just to keep it clean.
Yeah.
I'll accept a motion to make this effective July 1st, 2013.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Your first motion regarding existing users, we want that to be existing properties as opposed to users? That makes it easier on the grant for having existing structures or properties or parcels or something, or, you know, structures as opposed to the users.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's a user into it that personalizes it.
It should be existing properties.
Existing properties?
Do we have to cap it too?
Pre-existing connections.
Pre-existing hookups, connections. That's pre-existing connection, that's, I was just gonna say. Because if someone adds a second connection to the property, they're now subject to the new construction.
Existing connections.
Okay.
Could you give me the particulars? Who, who moved for the effective date?
Uh, Peter and Bruce. Second. Uh, we did, I should've said this at the top, we did get affirmation, talking to David about the billing system. There was some concerns last time about, it's gonna be an issue being able to use this one bill, and it's not something to be concerned about. Rate set annually. So, right now, we set all the rates right around March for the water. I, I would just promote that we include this as part of the annual rate setting.
Draft there.
Uh, the next, I'm actually gonna skip that one to the end. What happens in the event that someone doesn't pay their bill?
We send somebody down with a backhoe to rip up the pipe. Direct action.
Set the place on fire.
What do we do now?
Shut the water off.
We shut the water off.
Shut the water off.
Shut the water off.
Can we, can we shut it off in a fire suppression system, or is it, it's not like a metered connection? Does it have a separate, it must have a separate element?
No, they always, all will have valves to shut the water off, yeah.
Okay. There's no legal exposure in shutting off a fire suppression system for late payment?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do we need to define what is a late payment?
Well, they, they don't run out and shut the water off because you're 30 days late.
There's plenty of notification.
Okay. So, we can be silent on that?
Yeah.
I don't know. One more thing that might be, we might need to look into is potentially notifying, you know, the homeowner's insurance company or something, because that may, there may be an effect.
On their rate, their insurance rate?
That would probably get the payment.
That might be in the letter.
I don't know if we have an obligation to do so, however, there may be one, because, I, maybe not.
Yeah.
Where, because in, essentially, we'd be enabling a homeowner to commit some sort of fraud. If the homeowner decided, well, hell, I'm just not gonna pay it. If it's just a fire suppression that's being turned off, right, and getting a good rate, and I got a sprinkler system.
System, right.
It's not operational, but, of course, nobody in Uxbridge would ever take advantage of anyone like that.
Um, the next question I had is recurring fee in the first year, so we made the structure. It's unclear in the presentation, which is included. There's a, there's a hookup, well, first time connection fee, and then there's an annual recurring fee. The, there is no delineation, so I just wanna make sure we're on the same page, that the first year fee is what you pay in the first year, and then the recurring fee starts January...
Annual fee begins year two.
Year two.
Yep.
So...
So the hookup fee covers your first year?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Question on mandatory hookup fee, if available. So if you are on the grid for water, can you still elect to get a private system over hooking in?
I don't see why not.
I don't see why not, Joe. It's up, if you wanna dig a well.
It's an enterprise fund. If someone thinks it's more cost-effective to have a private water supply...
I agree. I agree. I just wanted to make, make sure that we, we covered that. So I'll accept a motion that the fee, the hookup not be mandatory for those who
Don't move.
Second.
are on the existing water main system. All in favor?
Aye. Change users, good, good, good.
You guys have anything else other than who will draft the policy? Anything else that you can think of related to this? We can always amend it later, but I just wanted to get some of the basics, so we can get a substantial draft.
No, that's good, because new people don't have to start off right away with, we gotta do, finish this before July 1st.
Right. All right, so now, on to who will draft the policy. Who wants to take the action to, to take a first draft of the policy? Anyone? Does the board, would the board like to delegate?
Well, what, what the, what the policy contain, other than the various...
Someone just needs to write it up. Nothing. Nothing more than what we just discussed.
Yeah.
Taking all those, that's why I wanted to get all the key elements of it, so whoever has to write, has to put the language in. But do we have a standard, we could probably take the existing water one and just modify it?
Certainly, my office can.
I, I will do it, to make it part of my legacy.
You are gonna do it?
Yeah, I'll take the first draft. If you would help me in sending me the...
Stepping up.
Why not?
A week to go. Got a week to do it.
All right. That's all I have on fire suppression. Nothing for the town meeting tomorrow, that we had to address as a priority tonight. And then...
It will be immediate, you do have a meeting scheduled at 6:30 though?
Tomorrow, yes, we do. Just in case.
And the meeting's gonna be held in the auditorium?
In the high school.
The new high...
High school.
The high school, yep.
It's a hero.
So, before it becomes an issue, moving to the meeting minutes, I think the media, the meeting minutes are accurate based on my intention of what was said at the last meeting regarding that issue on, on the increase. So I don't think there's a need for the modification, because we've addressed it to me in a second. So I would entertain a motion that the board approve the meeting minutes as ammend, as written.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Sean, can you just make sure that it's captured in that note, that it's as written, because I think Tracy suggested they were gonna be amended, but I don't think the minutes were wrong, it was just the interpretation. Town manager update.
I'll, I'll forward you my report tomorrow, I didn't finish it today. I just, I've had other things on my plate the last few days, so I just didn't finish it up, I apologize.
Anything pressing that we need to know going into town meeting?
There's been a lot of time and energy put into, you know, working, working with the superintendent and, you know, working with a lot of, there's been a lot of resident questions surrounding this budget article that's gonna be debated tomorrow. That's taken up a lot of, a lot of my time and energy, quite honestly.
Now, is it contemplated that there will be a motion to take 700 and something thousand dollars from stabilization?
Yes.
Augment the...
Yes.
Eight hundred fifty.
Seven hundred sixty-eight thousand.
That that's in compliance with the notice of what's gonna happen at meeting?
Stabilization vote would be, is, is in order, yes, provided, and if it, if it gets the two-thirds majority, then it would carry. Any other talk of, the only thing that would sort of, the only other discussion in terms of funding and mechanism that would be out of order would be like an override.
Yeah.
So any, any, any motion or amendment mentioning an override would be ruled out, out of order by the moderator, but the stabilization transfer is in, in order at transfer, or, sorry, at town, town meeting.
The, the manager's budget is presented in the, in the warrant.
Correct.
Okay? And we're increasing that budget by a substantial amount of money. And normally, there's some, some latitude involved, and you can increase, you know, appropriations over than what, what was in the warrant article. But within limits. So how was the determination made that increasing, increasing the appropriation by 700 and something thousand dollars is, is acceptable?
Well, in my discussions with council, that wasn't mentioned, that, you know, there is a, there is a, if you're actually increasing your, if you're going beyond the levy, obviously, which is what like a proposition two and a half override would be, obviously, then we're, then we have a percentage that we can't, can't exceed, but because we're using town funds...
That's, that's, that's a different question, though.
But council didn't bring that up, and so, I mean, I asked specifically about that, and council said, because of the nature of the transfer from stabilization, the fact that it's a certain percentage, he, he wasn't aware of any violation. I can ask again tomorrow if you would like, just to make sure. Again, I'm doing everything, I, I was the one that asked about the override, you and I had a small, small discussion about that.
Now, with the school, what, what, what's their intent for next year?
That's part of the problem.
I know.
Well, from my perspective, I can't answer that.
Yeah.
I know the superintendent has a long PowerPoint, has a PowerPoint presentation.
Ah, PowerPoint presentation. Ah, PowerPoint presentation.
For tomorrow, he's been out informing, you know, the residents about, you know, what this, what this, what this transfer means this year. The focus is not on next year, which is part of, which is as the, which is part of the town man, which is part, part of the town's issue with this particular transfer.
Yeah.
Because we're worried about what's gonna happen next year.
Now, this predates your tenure here, but one of the arguments in favor of the new school was that we'd no longer have to rent, you know, various spaces. And among the spaces we were not required or not gonna rent anymore was the Mendon Street space. But we're still renting it.
Hmm.
And there's plenty of space in the old town, old high school to accommodate that program. So-
I don't know. Again, those discussions predated me, although from what I, the few times that I've heard it mentioned in the couple of years that I've been here, yeah, the school has no intention of, that there's, there's integration problem because of the age of the students, of some of the students that are served by the central office, if you will, right? There's problems integrating them down into high school. That's all I really know. It's been brought up.
There's nothing new from when they told us they're gonna have those in-house between then and now.
That's certainly a question that, obviously, better addressed to the school committee.
I hope the moderator is gonna hold the, the school to the 10% length, 10-minute limit that everyone else is held to. Because we've had times when, you know, certain officials are allowed to go on for half an hour with some presentation. But town meeting is where every town meeting member is equal. There are no, no one has two votes, or no one is given a special preferential treatment.
After the superintendent submitted his slides, it was that the, the time limit was brought to his attention. He feels he can get through his presentation in seven to eight minutes.
Okay. Okay. It's really gonna raise a problem with the town to transfer that money. And-
It's a savings.
But beyond that, the, the big bugaboo is the next year, the next year, the next year.
I've been encouraging, obviously, the superintendent in the school committee, school department has been encouraging, you know, the parents to come out, and on, in this, I've been sort of encouraging everyone to come out. I, I, I recorded a PSA for cable, and I urged folks to come out, saying that there was gonna be potentially a stabilization transfer, which needs to be critically discussed and thought about by everybody. So, hopefully, you know, by all accounts, we could end up with more than 500 people. So, we should have strong turnout.
Well, I hope so. It's not unusual for the head of an organization, any organization, to find after a short time that, gee, you know, I really can't do the job with the resources that I'm given. That doesn't mean that the job can't be done. It just means that that person, me or you or somebody else, says, gee, I'm sorry, I thought I could do it, but I can't do it. But that doesn't mean that there are many other people that can look in and say, you know, I can do it with the resources given to me.
My worry is to the next year, they were talking 1.6 million.
Yeah.
Yeah. You get 700,000, what do we got next year?
Yeah.
You can't dive into stabilization next year, you can change the budget.
If the 1.6 is a real number, and they're taking half of that now, that means next year, they'll have to have the half they didn't get this year.
Well, they feel that that 1.6 should be covered under the revenue share agreement. That's why that discussion has happened. That 1.6 million dollars is special ed out of district in transportation.
Yeah.
The reason why it hasn't been covered under the revenue share agreement is because municipality views that as a school committee choice. It's the choice of what, it's a curriculum choice.
Yeah.
The town, the school decides, we can, we can or will serve these special ed students. We can't or won't serve these, so we send them out of district. Now, I know the superintendent is working on collaborative programs, he's working on trying to bring that number down. However, that's, the reason why that, that half of the 1.6 is on the table is because there, the school committee's assertion is that it shouldn't be part of the revenue sharing agreement. We disagree on that. So, it wasn't just sort of, yeah, it's not half this year and half next year, it's, it, it sort of feels, and it suits its purposes for this year, right? That this is something that, under the current terms, the current agreement we have, it should be part of the deal.
And the agreement is over this year.
Well, the school committee has talked of, I don't know if it's taken a formal vote to withdraw from the revenue sharing agreement, but-
Because we didn't have a gun till they had the sign.
The chair has been, the chair of the school committee's been pretty outspoken about it, so it won't surprise me if that action actually happens. Which, interestingly enough, well, not interestingly enough, won't affect the budgeting process-
Yeah.
From my standpoint.
Yes. The other thing for consideration tomorrow, I don't know if the board would like to recommend that we take things out of order, given if there is a large turnout, if there's things that you think we should move around. I'll take that in consideration.
Well, that's, that's town meeting besides that. We don't decide that.
But the board, as members of town meeting, we could certainly propose that.
Yeah, we can.
If we think that there's issues in here that we'd like to get a majority of people, because we know how these things practically go.
Yeah.
Once the vote's taken, everyone's out, you know, whether that be charter issues, whether that be-
Yeah, I know.
Mosquito control issues, you know?
It's a problem because, but it's a reality. You have people who go to town meeting for one vote only, and no matter what you do, they're gonna wanna take the vote that they want, and then they wanna go home.
I would appreciate a motion, but, you know, potentially, the, there is a representative from the Central Mass mosquito control program attending town meeting, because there has been some residential discussion about that particular issue, so if that, that would be one that I would, I think. I don't, I don't, I don't have the ability to.
Well, since they've already taken my 70 tires, I guess I'm okay with it.
If they bought your, if they bought in on your vote. So, Article 13, Sean, you would like to see moved?
Yes. I don't anticipate it being tremendously time-consuming, but it will, and I would hate for the gentleman to have to sit through Article 4 discussion.
Okay. And I will talk to the moderator and perhaps make a motion that we move him.
And again, and in the interest of maximum participation, the article surrounding the charter question, I believe, I think that's, that's a good idea to move that one forward as well. I think the more people that we have speaking on that, the better.
I would agree.
One thing I did do is, in the interest of educating the public, obviously, the warrant has been made available, it's in four different places on the website. It's at all the town agencies, and I also utilize, or I had the, the school department send out an email to the school listserv or whatever with a copy of the warrant attached. So, I'd made it out to some more registered, saying, here's the warrant, read it over. There are a lot of issues to be dealt with. Come and stay, so.
You'll be amazed at the people I come in contact with, they say, what, what charter? And they still, half of those say charter television.
That's right. That's right.
I mean, but that's just a matter of, you know, that's how it is.
They say, I hate them too. Okay. Any other, or member issues? Thanks, Sean. Any member issues you guys wanna discuss right now? So, 6:30 tomorrow, we'll see at the at the, at the school. Meeting adjourned.